Everybody else ready? I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education to order on Tuesday, August 11, 2020. And I would like to take a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of the Fourth Quarter Grievance Report, a matter related to the Good Shepherd property and a Board of Education personnel matter. Moved by Jennifer, seconded by Nikki, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries seven zero. I'll wait for the rest of the audience to step out. Thank you. Recall this meeting to order, and I've asked that everyone that's willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a free, democratic, liberal democracy with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with introductions. Good evening, I'm Diane McBride, I'm the Board President, and I'll go to my right.
I am Marie Strazinski, Board Vice President.
Good evening, Jennifer Lehrer, Board Member.
Good evening, Nikki Leplaca, Board Member.
Good evening, Neil Nussell, Assistant Superintendent of Student and Family Services.
Good evening, Andy Whitmore, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
Good evening, Deena Wilson, Assistant Superintendent for Construction.
Good evening, Pat McHugh, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Good evening, Doug Rivers, Board Member.
Good evening, James O'Brien, Board Member.
Good evening, Diane Dulla, Board Member.
George De Marto, Attorney for the District.
Oh, right, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Review, and we do have a change to our agenda, and we will be adding an item, it'll now become number five, before the public forum, it'll be the action pertaining to Board Personnel Matter. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Any announcements? All right, then that brings us to the Item Five, Action Pertaining to Board Personnel Matter. This is in regards to the removal of a board member, and we've had our hearing and our discussion, so I'm looking for a motion to whether or not to move forward with that removal. Removed by Jennifer. Is there a second? By May? Any further discussion? All in favor of the removal of Mr. Douglas Rivers? Please raise your hand. Anybody against? Be noted, Mr. Rivers, and there are no abstentions. So that motion carries six to one that we will be asking you to leave at this time. Mr. Rivers, thank you for your service. At a further time, we will make an announcement about our plans for an appointment, or what we would like to do with this position, and we will put it on a further agenda at another time, but we will not take any more action on it this evening. This brings us to our public forum. And Karen Flanagan, the School District Clerk, received a couple of emails, and I am going to read those here at this time. The first one that I have is from Mike and Beth, it looks like Kita, K-I-T-A, and there's, says, "Hi Karen, here's a few questions and concerns. Even though I think this pertains to the workshop that we're going to have in a little bit about the school reopening," I'm still going to read it now, "I believe the answers will come to these folks during that portion, if not, someone will get back to them." Item one is, "Please explain how kids with IEPs are not being offered four days a week of in-person instruction, especially kids with an ICOT classroom. They have a greater need for in-person instruction and extra assistance when it comes to learning, and can't afford to fall behind even more. How are my child's IEP goals going to be met when only expected to get two days a week in person, three days a week virtually? Our son has been in the district since UPK and based on the decisions and recommendations of the CSE and the BOE last year to move all ICOT classrooms to Crane. You can consider last year a wash with the staffing issues to start the year and the crazy end for everyone. Our son is at first grade reading level and actually regressed last year at the end of third grade, not due to the efforts of his teacher, but the situation that the district put them into with the changes last year. We have voiced our concerns again and again and feel like they're being pushed aside as he is moved on to the next grade school." Item three, "How come the county notified the district about the busing plan not working so late in the timeline? Seems like most would prefer the district's power plan to get K through six kids in school five days a week. How come this wasn't being discussed or shared prior to the bus survey slash questionnaire that the district sent out?" Point four, "Would if any time changes for school arrival and dismissal in our busing times?" Number five, "I believe it was mentioned that multiple entrances and exits being applied to each building, what extra safety measures are being put in place, since I know the district reconfigured the buildings to secure one entry exit point last year." Thank you for passing these along and including our questions and comments for the meeting on Tuesday. That was that one. This is number two. This is from Sheila Buck, our President of the Rush Henrietta Employees Association Teachers' Chapter. "I wish to share this in the public forum tonight. The RHA teachers would like to inform the Board of Education that the RHA is willing and able to solve the date for the opening of schools through constructive discussions with the district. Teachers want to be able to be prepared for the beginning of the year. The RHA teachers hopes that the district also has a desire for teachers to be ready for students in this unprecedented time, and that we should have a common interest that could be solved easily. Teachers need time to plan for a type of instruction that has never been done before. Teachers need time to consider the health implications during instruction, how that might change their practice. Teachers need time to consult with each other, collaborate, and ask questions of administration. It is possible for the district and teachers to come to an agreement on what is best for students. Sincerely, Sheila Buck." And this one came in at 4:26, wasn't quite, you know, an hour's time, but I said we're going to read it anyway. This is, "Hello, I'm Rachel Sherman, the parent of incoming eighth, sixth, and fourth graders. I am sympathetic to the RH administration who has been tasked with the impossible to plan for a safe and effective learning environment this fall in the midst of a global pandemic. It just isn't possible to do what you're being asked to do without added resources from the state or federal governments. Thank you for your hericlean efforts, phew, you are making on extremely challenging conditions. It has been a while since I have been in front of you to discuss the topic of healthy school start times. As soon as school went remote in the spring, the problem with bus pickups and start times in the 6:00 AM and 7:00 AM hours were solved immediately, with the district allowing children to log in to meet with teachers and do their school activities at later times in the day. We love this flexibility. From what I can tell, most families and children establish schedules that work for them, with later waking times the norm. My children began to rise between 8:00 and 9:00 AM. Despite the pandemic stress and loss of socialization, their moods lightened and their functioning improved thanks to the added sleep. The scientific research documents the many improvements to academic performance and mental well-being that come from more sleep. We know the problem isn't solved by enforcing early bedtimes and no electronic rules. The research shows that adolescents are naturally wired to fall asleep and rise later in the morning. On behalf of a start school later Rush Henrietta, I am asking that you continue the later school start times that we established in the spring. You have a unique opportunity now with 100% remote learning group, as well as those who are hybrid students on their three work-from-home days. At this moment in time, these students need all the support they can get. To ask them to log in at 7:15 or 7:30 AM to begin school while they are under the stress, disappointment, and other strictures of a global pandemic would be adding another unnecessary burden to their educations, their ability to focus, and their mental health. We are no longer challenged by busing schedules and setting healthy start times for these students. Please continue to allow healthy start times as recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics, which are no earlier than 8:30 AM for adolescents and teens. It'd be one silver lining for students who have otherwise lost so much. Thank you for your consideration. Rachel Sherman, RH Class of 94, and other three RH students." All right. Thank you for those comments, and they'll be noted. This brings us to Consent Agenda Items for Routine Matters. That's, I guess it's now seven, 7A through O. I'll take a motion, then I have a comment. Okay, motion by Nikki, seconded by Jennifer. I just, under H, the transportation policy, I just wanted to ask, I felt like this afternoon, the change, would it be just temporary for this year, or is this a permanent change?
At this point, it's just for this year.
Okay. Just wanted to bring that up. All right. All in favor? Any opposed? No. That motion carries six zero. This brings us to Item eight now, our Proposed Calendar Amendment. And you want to, anybody want to talk to that?
Yeah, I will speak to it in general terms, and then I'll ask Dr. McHugh to provide commentary as well. I mean, the short version is that we initially were scheduled to hold two days of student attendance prior to Labor Day weekend, but given the situation that we're in, the reopening is going to be unique, to put it mildly, and teachers are going to need a lot of support, a lot more time for preparation and training, and so we wanted to be able to provide that not only to teachers, but to other staff members, as well as we look to reopen under very abnormal circumstances. And so, the calendar amendment would allow for time for training that we need, and would allow also ample time for teachers to focus on lesson planning and set up in respect to learning environments, and it would move the first day of attendance for students to September 8, the Tuesday after the Labor Day holiday. Pat, is there anything to add?
No, we covered it all.
Did I say Memorial Day the first time?
No, Labor.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I felt like it came out. Happy to be live.
Groundhog's Day.
So generally speaking, that's the proposal.
I just have a question. I see that you took away October 9, the Superintendent's Conference Day for being in school. Is there an additional day that was added?
So we would technically lose what we accounted for as a snow day.
Okay.
On August 31, the kickoff, how was the kickoff going to look like? Is that going to be something virtual? Are we expecting the board members to come?
Yeah, we're not planning on doing an in-person kickoff.
Okay.
Due to health and safety concerns. We also wanted to allow as much time as possible for
For planning?
For planning within buildings.
Okay.
However, we are planning on doing a welcome back video. We would ask that Diane be a part of that as Board President as well.
Very disappointed.
You could just drive around with it.
That's right. As long as I was
There you go.
Just out the sunroof.
The driver's ed car.
If I need more than six feet with the t-shirt.
And we would obviously not be visiting our schools that we represent.
Yeah, that would, I wouldn't recommend that, as that's one of the other things that we're trying to do, even for those of us who are employed by the district, that's something that throughout the summer and even into the fall, we're trying to limit our visitations to schools in person, and when we have to go into a building, making sure that our path is direct exactly to where we need to go, again, out of an abundance of caution.
So no in-person kickoff, no first day visits to schools, we will not have school visits this year as well, there's just not really conceivable at this time to, until we know more down the road, you know? If it warrants that we can, then we will.
Related, but slightly tangential, any idea what will be happening with our PTOs? Will they?
Again, all non-essential meetings, and I say that not meaning to diminish in any way the work of our PTOs, but where we can meet virtually, we're recommending that we should.
I know Berger finished the school year off with a virtual PTO meeting, so that, you know, is a really good, it was, it worked, because it's not a large group at this moment, or it wasn't then, so.
I have another question that relates to the PTO. The parents who are on, like, say, on the board of a PTO, but they have elected to do full remote, are they still considered members of that school?
So here's what I would say. The scheduling of that student may change so that they're scheduled with students from other schools, but I would, I mean, I would say that that parent, because their home base is still, say, file is an example, that they should be allowed to remain on that school's board.
Okay.
I don't think that that should be impacted because of these very unique circumstances.
Would that be the same for parents that are choosing this year to homeschool? Because they're not really technically part of the school.
As far as parents who have children who are now homeschooling, but yet they are sitting on a board?
Yeah.
I would say, yeah, I think that these are very unique circumstances, and I don't think that parents should be penalized because of the choices that they were forced to make this year.
I would agree with that, but I just thought, oh, well, we're asking, let's ask that too, so that somebody else is going to ask that out there, so, all right, great. Any other questions about the calendar? All right, so then we need to take a motion to accept the amendment. Nikki, seconded by May. All in favor? All right, motion carries six zero. Thank you, everyone. I'm sure the staff will appreciate a little extra time. This brings us to Personnel Actions, I'll take a motion to accept them. All right, I am Marie, and I have Nikki. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six zero. This brings us to the Fund Balance and Tax Warrants. And thank you for the preliminaries, Andy, because that helped prepare for what you did send today.
Yeah, this was a bit of a unique year, and just to remind everybody at the conclusion of the meeting, please stay around, assign the tax warrant, if it's approved tonight, I need signatures from every board member. But typically, in order to finalize our tax rates, the county has to run, they, two things happen. The county runs our proposed rate through their system to make sure that it generates the amount of revenue that we estimate it will, but the other thing is, ever since the governor changed the STAR amount and limited to no more than 2% per year, that means it's not an easy calculation, it has to be done by property, so it has to be run through the county. So we can't finalize our tax rate because there's always a portion of the STAR taxes that are in excess of 2% that we won't get reimbursed from STAR, so we have to put it back into the warrant. The county usually does this in the first week of August, so last week I sent them our tax rates and asked for the information, and they wrote back and then said that it was delayed because the state had not sent them their final files. And so they actually ran it this afternoon, I got a, at Leadership Development, I got an email at 2:00 from Susan Buck in the county, who said, "Your numbers are ready." So I ran back and did it, so that's why it was preliminary. I do apologize for that, but I couldn't finalize, and fortunately, we got it today, that precludes us from having to do a special meeting. So that's why it was preliminary, but we ended up the year in a lot better shape than what we had anticipated. So in June, when we gave the fund balance projection to the board, we did receive some preliminary approval, how to disposition that fund balance, and so we've done that, but then there's additional fund balance. So the thought, the approval then was given for the retirement reserve to replenish the $200,000 that we had budgeted for this year, plus put in another $800,000 for a total million dollars to that. Fund the TRS reserve, $800,000, which is the maximum we're allowed to fund per year for, put $200,000 towards our unemployment reserve, because if our state aid is diminished, we may face mid-year cuts, which we're hoping we won't, but it's best to have that there. $500,000 to our 2016 bus reserve, and then the remainder was to go into our 2016 capital reserve. We ended up with more fund balance than projected, and so we went to the cap of our 2016 reserve, so I'm proposing that the remainder goes into our new 2020 capital reserve. And the benefit of putting in the capital reserve, as you know, we have over $4 million in our budget transfer to capital, which is our state aid, building aid we get. Given the likelihood of mid-year cuts from the state this year, what we would do, that would be the first cut we would take if we had to take a cut in our budget, that transfer, so really, this pre-funds this year's transfer from the leftover funds at the end of last year. And really, the big areas that we got the fund balance, state aid, last year, there was a new group of home opened up in the district, and we're supposed to get a tuition allowance. The state did not provide that last year, so they made it up to us this year, so that was $1.2 million that we hadn't budgeted from the prior year. Our sales tax, sales tax was running very strong all year for the first three quarters, so we ended up, even though the fourth quarter, it went into a tailspin, we still ended up $700,000 higher than our budget. And then pilot payments were running strong, we were about $1.4 million favorable in pilot payments, and the reason is, I have no way to project what they call shelter rent, there's a number of student housing projects that CAMITA has given a full tax break, and what they pay, they don't pay a predetermined amount, they pay a percent of their net rent, and we never know what that is until they've closed their books for the year and it's audited, and then that's given to the town and we get our share. So we ended up about $1.4 million favorable there, and if you remember, when we were setting the upcoming budget, we knew we were going to be favorable, so that helped to offset our marketplace decline we're seeing. So we actually increased our pilot amount for 2021 a little bit, but the remainder we're using to offset the decline in marketplace. So on the revenue side, we had about $3.5 million of good news, and then on the expense side, it was all over. We had about $2.5 million in wages and salaries, I mean, clearly, the last third of the year, things were frozen, and there wasn't any of the supervision payments, and a lot of the normal payments we do at year end, and then we saved $1 million with the associated benefits on that. Utilities were, electric was very favorable, about $700,000, and then bus fuel was very favorable. So we ended up the year over $8 million favorable to what we projected, and so what this, what we're asking the board to approve is the disposition of that, so we stay within our 4% limit. We'll leave 4% of our fund balances unallocated, which is the most we can do, because that's our second go-to source of funding if we have cuts this year. So that's the long-winded story on fund balance. Any questions?
I'm glad you do the dollars.
So that's the first proposition, or the first memo that explains it, the second memo is the actual proposition. And then the other thing we do, every year, we do build an appropriated fund balance, we take some of our leftover funds and put it in the next year to help reduce the tax levy, so that's $3 million. So the next proposition offer, or is really all the, authorizes all the reserve, and then Proposition Three is the $3 million appropriated fund balance, plus the $5.4 million of the 4% unappropriated fund balance. And then finally, any questions on that? The last thing then is tax rates. Town of Henrietta did go through a reassessment this year, and our total assessed value in the Town of Henrietta was up about 9%. So that was a combination of the reassessment, but also, there was a couple, there were a couple of significant new projects. The remainder of the VA hospital came on the books for this year, and then a significant amount of the new RG&E substation came on, so they were part of that 9%. So between the reassessment and the new property that came on board, there was a 9% assessment growth. So when we get to the final tax rates, our tax rates, rather than going up 1.5% that we had projected, they're actually down 3.5%, which should be good news to our taxpayers during these tough times. So that's, any questions on tax rates? So if you approve them tonight, then I have the tax warrants that I need signed at the conclusion of the meeting.
Any questions for Andy? So we'll take these one at a time here. Looks like 9B, 9C, and 9D need action. So I'll take a motion for 9D, the approval of the resolution transferring the funds into the Bus Reserve Fund. Take a motion. I've got Jennifer, and May, all in favor. Okay. Carry six zero. Action pertaining to the retention of funds under the real property tax law memo, take a motion. Nikki, Jennifer, second, all in favor? Okay, that carries six zero. And the final tax computations resolution, take a motion to accept. James, did I see your finger? Yep. Okay. And Nikki, this is second, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. You have your wish, Andy.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to Item, I believe it's 11, our Workshop on the Mission, Vision, and District Priorities. I will turn it over this way.
Okay. So what I wanted to do was to provide you with the district's mission and vision, along with reports in respect to what our priorities were for the 1920 school year, and then I want to discuss what we are proposing for the upcoming school year. As you can see, you've had the opportunity to review what we're proposing for the district's mission and vision, there are no changes there, but nevertheless, I think that it's important to go through it as a reminder of what our charge is each and every day, and the broader, more long-term vision for what we expect for our students. So our mission is to prepare every student for responsible citizenship, lifelong learning, and college or career success, and our vision of excellence is centered around the following focus areas: safe and supportive learning environments, high levels of student learning, a culture of collaboration, continuous improvement, and responsible resource management. And that will remain, unless you feel that it needs to change, for the 2021 school year.
Anybody feeling there's any need for a change? Good. There's enough work to be, to go on.
That's right. I'm just glad physically safe school settings is at the very top of the list. I mean, I know that's
Yes.
Where it was anyway, but snaps into a new focus this year, that's for sure.
Just a little commentary, I do this, it's just maybe it could be helpful to others, I actually keep a printed copy here in my notebook, so while I'm going through board docs and looking at So while I'm going through board docs and looking at our, you know, our agenda and the items that are on it, that it helps keep my focus where it needs to be. So, you know, I think that's important for the community, you know, how we think through some of these things, so.
Absolutely. It's important to remind ourselves of what our mission is and what our vision is periodically. So our priorities for the 1920 school year, you had the opportunity to review the year-end report for each priority. Were centered around instructional program in the area of ELA, math, and ICT, special education, equity and inclusion, and mental wellness. Are there any questions on the end-of-year reports? Yes?
I have a couple. I was looking at the academic intervention and the Read 180 program. You have it for seventh and ninth graders. Are you going to let the younger grades use the Read 180 as well?
No, right now, we only have a district license for seventh through eighth grade, actually.
Is that? Is that something you guys will reconsider, especially with the online learning? You could blend and flip. I mean, I'm just thinking teachers could use that to, because it is offered for younger kids. And there's also a phonics program to it for the younger kids who might need it, especially our special ed kids. That's what I was thinking of. Is that something you might consider?
So as far as our regular programming, our Ready Gen ELA program does have an online component that we purchased. So what we're striving to do is keep this as consistent for our teachers and for our students. And due to trying to learn how to teach in a hybrid model and use more of learning methodologies, our goal is to remain with the same programs that we have at the current time, to not try to learn a new program in addition to learn new teaching methods. At this point in time, the ELA directors, as well as principals, feel pretty comfortable that what we have available at the intermediate level to be able to offer an online component will be able to serve us well for this upcoming school year. So at this point in time, we are not looking to break Read 180 down to the intermediate schools.
Okay. Will that program also include with, like the specialized, especially those who are in like an I-COP model? Is that?
That they, our special ed students are instructed the same model. We provide accommodations and modifications as they did. Also provide them with some additional programs, depending what their needs are.
Okay.
For example, should be like the Wilson reading program or so forth, they get that too. So the special ed students will still have access to the same programming that they had in the year, full-time in school. I don't think remotely might be different to ever special ed at this point.
The Wilson, though, are they, that's a direct, that's, is that computer-based or is that teacher?
That one is, the Wilson right now, and that's one of many.
Right.
That's not the only one that we offer, depending on what the student needs are. That one is more in person, but they are coming out with online components. So for example, foundations we use for our foundation construction at the K3 level, and they currently, over the summer, came out with their online component.
Okay.
So we're investigating that right now. We're getting licenses for that. And we're developing a training program. They're still looking through it to identify what parts of that online component we want to use, and then what we'll be doing in class. But a lot of the materials too, we bought like at-home kits. So I'll go back to the foundations as an example. That, you know, there's the whiteboards and tiles. Everyone has gone through our foundations program. So foundations did respond this past spring, you know, in what we're anticipating with more remote learning. And we purchased little kits for every student to take home so that when they're even at home working, they can do a lot of the multisensory activities. So if a teacher has posted like a video or a lesson, a synchronous lesson, they'll have the tiles there. Or if there's a day a teacher's doing a synchronous intervention that the students are, you know, coming in remotely, they can be modeling and the kids can be holding up their tile boards and so forth. So we have purchased extensive amount of additional licenses for teachers to be able to do more online that align with their current programs, as well as the nimble tips to send home for kids to use. So ZERN, the elementary.
Right.
Align perfectly with your Read Math. A lot of teachers used that last year. They all had like their little free subscriptions. We have now purchased a district licensing for ZERN K6. In fact, it just came out in the sixth grade level two weeks ago.
Right, I know. I'm learning it now.
So we're on, we're on top of it, trying to stay purchasing as many online resources and the nimble tips, you know, and extra books and so forth to send home to support our current programs.
Now, just like the ZERN, like I know, I've heard a lot of parents say like, they don't want their kid like on this all the time. So for ZERN, are you able to print out like the power towers? And are you going to give them a hard copy? Because I know I had hard copies for each of those to send home. Like I had like the, just like all like the problem sets and some of the homework. So the city actually bound it and you could take it home. Are we going to do that so they'll have something like pencil and paper instead of on the screen all the time?
So our hard copy resources that are still to choose from books or like workbooks, like on the Read Math books, bound books that we send home. We have reduced the amount of those lessons because we've had to streamline our lessons a little bit. But those workbooks, per se, will be going back and forth with the kids. And if we need to make additional materials, as long as we're in hybrid mode and the kids are showing up two days a week, we can give any kind of paper material that is needed.
Because the ZERN is nice. I mean, they have really nice resources. Okay, thank you.
Along with that, I know it's a more of a IT thing, but with printing, it made me think of that being able to print stuff. Are we going to have, are parents going to have access to print from students' Chromebooks at home?
That's a difficult feature.
It is.
Not even as a staff member, can we print from our devices? Due to the way that we have to configure any board or student device, we cannot allow for devices to be hooked up.
Okay.
So there's almost like a blocking feature, if I have a better word. Some people that are very good with IT find workarounds and they print at home. But as far as us, you know, put something on devices or allowing that to happen, it would just really cause too much havoc to the backend of our infrastructure when they are in school.
I would then, because of, it was an issue in my household last year. But I would recommend telling parents to remind them they can log into Google on their kid's account on their own computers, because that's how we worked around it. Because I was like, you can't write all these math problems. So we just had them sign in and print everything off. And it was so much easier that way.
Yeah, we learned a lot last spring. As you know, we have gone through the tremendous amount of survey results that we have from teachers and from parents. And we have summarized those. And we have used them to help inform our decision-making for this school year. The good news is, is overall, parent satisfaction was very positive. And then the feedback was great too, because, you know, obviously, in tomorrow, our leadership team, you know, we did a pretty good job in reactive mode. I'm confident we're going to do an even better job this year in proactive mode. So we've learned a lot of things. As you know, we responded with a lot of parent videos last year. We had some coaches and teachers that stepped up and did a great job posting that. We're finding that there's some more information we need to get out to parents. So videos have been created this summer. And little tips and tricks such as, we'll just go to your personal device and you can print anything from your personal device. We'll be putting all those little tricks together to share with parents. And, you know, we're already thinking about having some parent information, you know, virtual meetings, obviously for our home learning academy, but as well as for the hybrid academy. So we're trying to keep track of all those little things and find a succinct way to be able to share that out with families.
I figured you were, but I just wanted to bring it up, so.
Well, but keep bringing them up, because every time I think we've thought about everything, there's some other things we do not think about.
Yeah. Well, thank you for all your hard work.
Other questions related to the end-of-year reports? So for the upcoming school year, I'm going to be recommending that we keep the same priorities for 2021. I don't think we're to a point where any of these are what we would call operational. However, as you, as you see in my draft, I am suggesting several language changes. And I did reorder the priorities, and that was done intentionally. I think equity and inclusion needs to be our umbrella priority. I think if we can give all of our students what they need, then the rest of the priorities are going to fall in line. I suggested changes under the equity priority in respect to language. I think, as I, as I look back at what we wrote a year ago, especially given, given all that's happened over the course of the past few months in our society, I think that we need to take a stronger stance. And I think the language that we put, as we described this priority, needed to support that. You'll also notice that I included language about our commitment to making sure that the curriculum that we offer is culturally relevant and culturally responsive. I think the last six months has highlighted a lot of other inequities that need to be on the radar, because, you know, I think, you know, as Dina said, we were in reactive mode last spring. I think we're going to be much better prepared. I don't want to say think, I want to say I know that we'll be much better prepared this fall. And, you know, now that we know, we can do better. We know that with some students, they had, while we gave them a device, they had difficulty because they didn't have quality access to internet. We're in a better position to work with families and help them to get access as it relates to the internet. You know, we knew that, you know, at certain points this spring, that some families were struggling with their housing situation, which made, you know, their, their daily work effort very, very difficult. Again, I think we're in a better position where we can support kids and support families under those difficult circumstances. And so I, I put that as our first priority, because I think that that's something more so than anything else that we need to pay attention to as we look to reopen schools. I also think that we have to really focus on mental wellness. You'll see that I only suggested minor language changes there. But I think, you know, this has been a really hard six months. It's been a hard six months for every single person sitting in this room. It's been a very difficult six months for the families that we serve, our parents. Our students are going to come back with a certain degree of trauma, regardless of the household, regardless of the situation that they're coming from. Our staff is going to come back with a certain degree of trauma, right? There's going to be a lot of fear, a lot of anxiety because of the uncertainty that surrounds this entire situation. And I think that we need to be sensitive to that. So I purposely moved them up. That doesn't mean to say that, you know, instructional programming and special education doesn't matter. But I think there's a lot of crossover. And I think that first and foremost, we need to focus on giving all of our students what they need and getting them to a place where, you know, from a social, emotional, and a mental wellness standpoint, they can be successful in what's going to be a very unique school year using very different instructional techniques and models to support our students. Any questions before I transition into, or comments before I transition into the last two priorities? And some of the thinking behind the changes we're proposing?
I think the first sentence under equity and inclusion, I'm happy to see that there. I think it's a reaffirming statement for our community.
I, I think that, you know, we met, this was our first day of leadership development. So it was, it was, you know, the first time since we closed in March that we had the entire group together, about 45 people. And it was different. It took some getting used to in those beginning minutes. Everybody was sort of feeling their way through the process. You know, adhering to distancing and making sure that we were masked when appropriate and trying to get through our, our program, which obviously focused very heavily on what we need to do in order to reopen. But I think that these priorities that we choose, they anchor us in terms of what we value as a district. And we wanted to make sure that if we're going to continue to focus on equity, given the issues that have surfaced over the past year, that we're strongly committed to that. And that's why the first sentence reads, "The Rush Henrietta Central School District stands together against racism and discrimination." I would like to see us be the leader in Monroe County as it relates to equity. And I know that we have the infrastructure in place, the people in place to do that. So we are an educational institution. And so obviously, instruction is still very important to us. We, we did make a modification to the title, and I'll, I'll explain a little more why as we get down into the body there in respect to the language, changing instructional programs to just instruction. Part of our thinking centered around the fact that we did move parts of special education under instruction. And what we did was, we looked at the instructional outcomes piece of that priority and moved that under instruction. Because what we were finding was, too often, people wanted to separate the two. You know, this is what we do for instructional programs, and then this is what we're instruction, and this is what we do for special ed. And we felt like, no, this is part of what we need to consider for instruction. And we don't, we don't separate any other subgroup out that way when we're talking about instruction or instructional programs. And so we're proposing that change this year to focus on the special education component related to instructional outcomes under that section. And we also thought it was important. I will say, prior to the pandemic, because we start thinking about these things early, and when we were doing our mid-year check-ins related to the priorities, we started to have conversations about ICT, that being information, information, communication technology. Sometimes I bumble that. We started to have conversations around, you know, look, we have the infrastructure in place. We've been a one-to-one district for a while now. Maybe it's time, you know, it's looking like this is operational now. Maybe it's time to move that out. And then the pandemic hit, right? And we realized this, this needs to continue to be an area of focus, nested underneath that priority. But it changes, right? It's not necessarily about, I mean, it's not just about the capstones or staff proficiency, right? It, it's going to change because our reality had to change. And now we're looking at remote learning models and hybrid models where students have to be able to shift back and forth. And then what does that mean when people are in person? So the, it's still going to remain an area of focus nested underneath instruction. But you'll notice we added some language there around being able to operate within a variety of instructional models. So initially, like I said, we were leaning toward, prior to the pandemic, and taking that out, but we feel like it needs to stay. But the, but where we place our attention in that area is, is going to be centered around really trying to improve our capacity in terms of our ability to, to implement those models well and to get students and staff comfortable navigating. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. And then, last but not least, is, is special education. As I said before, we moved some of that language up into instruction. But there are some, some key areas of focus within this priority that are centered around graduation rate and some of the things around disproportionality that we have to address. And so we felt like that, that needed to sit outside of instruction. And so we, so we felt like we're going to leave it still as its own priority, move some of the instructional components under instruction, and then focus more on graduation rate and some of the, some of the disproportionals related to general, more general student outcomes. And that's why we suggested those changes there. So, you know, under normal circumstances, this week, Monday, we would have gathered in the burger cafeteria for our community stake- we would have gathered in the Burger cafeteria for our community stakeholder forum. And this is where we would unveil the proposed priorities for the year. And we would ask for feedback around the priorities themselves, language changes, things of that nature. For obvious reasons, we weren't able to do that this year. But what we did was we sent this out to the, to administrative council, leaders of district parent advisory and convoling parent leaders, along with all of you, so that we can get feedback this week in respect to what we're proposing. So we, I expect that when I bring this back to you, there will be some edits and some revisions. And if there is anything that you see that you're not comfortable with now, then we can look to, I'll make note of those changes and include it in the proposed revisions. As you know, it will come back to you. And, and then once we've shined it up and you are in agreement, then we'll ask you to adopt those as our priorities for the upcoming school year. Yes, sir?
Under instruction, this is just a suggestion. I think we don't need that first sentence. I think it actually would be stronger if you just started out with English language arts. Mathematics and special education instruction must continue to be strengthened. The first sentence is somewhat redundant in that. And the other problem I have with it is it, is that you start off saying the following areas need confinement, and then you list the three, but then you discuss other areas down below. So I just think it would be a little shorter, more direct if you just eliminated the first sentence.
You know, it's funny because that's, that's been, the instructional priority has been written that way since I've been here. And I've looked at it probably a thousand times. But it's the first time I ever looked at it and read it where it did appear to be redundant. I'm, I'm open to that. If the rest of you are in agreement, then we can strike that first sentence. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Good catch, George. Any other changes that you would like to see us make in respect to what's being proposed? Like I said, I'm sure we'll be coming back with, with edits and revisions.
I have to say, looking at that, looking at the ICT component, I can't imagine how it would have been this spring had we not been as far along in our plan as, as we were. I mean, obviously, all of our plans can always, you know, get tweaking and updating. And, but I just, so I'm grateful that we had that four-seven moving ahead. Grateful for teachers stepping up and doing, you know, some of them I know are their comfort zone. Or sure, it'd be out of mind for sure. So I'm glad that that's still in there.
That for sure made a difference. The, the steps that the district took over the course of the last five, six years to build the infrastructure, to make sure that students had access to devices. We wouldn't have been able to do it if, if you didn't have the devices. And so, you know, that's a, that's a testament to all the folks that were here and initiated all that. And then, you know, Dina and Brad and, and all the folks who, when, when we, when we had to mobilize really quickly, you know, were able to put those structures in place so that, so that students were, were able to work remotely. And, and I say that recognizing that, that nothing we did over the course of the past four months was, was perfect. And there's certainly room to improve. And like I said, going into the situation this year, we're a lot more wiser. And I know that, that we'll do better. But to do what was done, I commend everybody for the work that they did in order to, to do the right thing for kids and families. So that's, that's the draft of, of what we're proposing. And we'll, we'll bring it back to you at our next meeting for further discussion. Okay?
All right. This brings us now to our workshop on the reopening of schools.
So what I'd like to do is just to sort of give you a, a general overview. Some of you sit on the district task force. So you've been part of these conversations all along. So I apologize in advance if some of this material feels a little redundant. But I, I think that it's important to try and be thorough in the way that we, we cover the conversation because I recognize that, that not everybody has been a part of the conversation from the beginning. And then we'll, you know, things change really quickly. So there will be new information that we're sharing too. Things literally change on a daily basis. You know, again, I want to thank the community for their patience. I, I know that with the uncertainty that surrounds the reopening of schools, that it's, it's stressful. But I will say that generally speaking, even though a lot of folks have expressed frustration, there are more folks who have been patient with us. And we, we truly appreciate that. And I, and I want to commend everybody that works for the Rush Henrietta Central School District. Because I don't think people always realize how hard folks are working. You know, we don't always get it right, but it's never because of lack of effort. People are working really hard to try to do the right thing in support of our kids and our community. And so I, I just, I want to recognize that this is a really difficult situation for everybody. But I am appreciative, I know our team is appreciative of, you know, generally speaking, the support of our community and all the work that's, that's happening with our, our administrators, faculty and staff to make sure that we're ready to open safely in September. Initially, you know, I, I was pretty transparent that, you know, from a philosophical standpoint and, you know, strictly from an educational standpoint, I, I felt like we needed to bring as many students back to campus as we could in the fall, as long as we could do it safely. We didn't have specific guidance for the first part of the summer. We actually started preliminary planning this spring. But we were, we were doing it in the absence of specific guidelines at that point in time from the Department of Health and the State Education Department. They were being very cautious in terms of releasing those guidelines. And that's understandable. But as we planned, what we were initially looking at was a model that brought kindergarten through sixth grade students, essentially all of our elementary grades, back to campus for in-person instruction every day. As you can imagine, there were, there were challenges to that. We were anticipating that there would be guidelines that were centered around masking. We were anticipating that there would be guidelines specific to distancing. We were anticipating that there would be guidelines in respect to disinfecting. And we were hearing that there may be guidelines in respect to health screening and temperature taking. But nothing had come out at that point in time. Our, our planning called for probably seventeen to nineteen students at the intermediate level. I know that that sounds like a lot of students. But given what we anticipated the regulations were going to be, we were able to distance desks six feet across, four feet in front. And as we learned more, once the regulations were released, we learned that we could, we could use desk barriers if we weren't able to distance six feet in every direction at that point in time. The guidance was pretty clear with the State Education Department. And then they came out with an FAQ that said it's six feet or a mask or a barrier. And so that's how we orchestrated our, our plans. In the primary buildings, we were, we were pretty sure that we were, we would be able to adhere to the six feet in terms of distancing. And again, in spaces or classes where we couldn't do that, we planned to utilize desk barriers in order to bring everybody back. We would have had to switch tables for desks. So more than likely, had we implemented that model, we would have brought down intermediate desks to the primary building and secondary desks into the intermediate building. I thought that would be the major hiccup with that plan. It wasn't. We were actually able to get approval from the Department of Health in terms of our arrangement for learning environments. We, another challenge, even though that the guidance said should not shall in terms of how you position students on, on the bus, was centered around transportation. Because in order to bring that many students in, we would have had to put forty to forty-five students on a bus. I guess it would have been just before the week of July twenty-seventh, going into the week that the plan was due. We were, we were told that we, we needed to, we, we reached out to Farar Fierunza, which is one of the law firms that we work with, to get some clarification. They have been, been working with several districts in the area around specific aspects of the plan. We were told by them, because in some respects, we were an outlier in terms of the number of students that we were putting into classrooms and the number of students that we were proposing to put on a bus, that we needed to get explicit endorsement from the local department of health. As I said, we were able to, well, our first step was we reached out to the State Education Department and said, here's how we interpret the regs. I say the regs from the State Education Department. That's the novel that they released that was about a hundred fifty pages, but very specific guidance. And they said, look, it's a local decision, just follow the regulations. And I said, well, the issue is that, you know, the regulations can be interpreted differently. And so our attorneys asked that we reach out then to the Department of Health to, to make sure that they were, they were willing to endorse. So we've got approval with our classroom, with our classroom configuration. But when it came to transportation, they said, look, we're, we're not recommending anything over thirty students on a bus. We, you know, another snag, even though we weren't told explicitly that we couldn't do it, is that we would have had to seat students from different households in the same seat, even though we were proposing masking. That was something that, even though we were, we weren't told that we couldn't do it, it was something that I would say was, was frowned upon in terms of, of planning. So at that stage, we, we, we had never been told at that point that thirty was the number until that day. And that was July twenty-eighth. It was, it was on that Tuesday. And so at that point, you know, our, our plan, that was the last step. That was the last hurdle that we had to get over in order to, to bring students in in grades K six. So that morning, we pivoted. We went to a K-12 hybrid. And all of our planning from there was centered around that model. And so on that Friday, July thirty-first, when we submitted our plan and let the community know, all of, all of the general planning that we submitted was centered around a K-12 hybrid. You know, I, I talked about how complex it is in terms of what we've been asked to do. Essentially, guidance went out, I believe, on the, on the sixteenth. And we were asked to submit our plans on the thirty-first. And so essentially, we were asked to tear down, tear apart the entire operation and completely rebuild it in two weeks. So the idea was to come up with general principles in terms of how we would function in terms of a reopening in September. And then, once approved, then you spend the next four weeks filling in all the detail work that we have to flesh out in order to reopen, which is, as I said, incredibly difficult. Because a lot of the work that we would typically do in a six-month period, we were asked to do in essentially less than six weeks. So, so it is, it is complicated. We will, we will be, as you know, offering a fully remote option for families who want to take advantage of that and aren't necessarily comfortable sending kids back to school. Families can also choose from what the state has categorized as a hybrid model, where they would attend in person two days and would participate in remote instruction for the other three days. Although, you know, there may be an opportunity to do some things differently with the, with Wednesday sessions. Dina will be talking more specifically about what those models look like. And, you know, we're still working through a lot of the, the health and safety requirement planning that we need to have in place. Most of that is, you know, we, we have most of that specifically addressed in our planning. But there are still some details that we, that we need to work out. I would say the hot, the hottest topics right now are centered around the protocol for COVID-nineteen testing and contact tracing. That's, that's something that we were explicitly told not to do for those of you that read the SED guidance. And then all of a sudden, last week, by way of the governor's address, we were told that that was something that was going to be an expectation. And we have those plans and protocols in place. The, the simplest way to, we will have, we will have a district protocol in place. But it will be, those plans will, will all be the same throughout the region because our local Department of Health has been very clear that they take the lead as it relates to COVID-nineteen testing. No one is proposing daily testing in schools. Students would only be asked to take a COVID-nineteen test if they were symptomatic or if there was potential exposure. And that would be handled, and any testing determinations would be made by the Department of Health. It wouldn't be made by the district. Same with contact tracing. We're education professionals who are not medical professionals. And those determinations will be made by the Department of Health as well. So there will be general guidelines and a link to what is being recommended by the Monroe County Department of Health and Dr. Mendoza.
And that would be the same for the teachers and the staff? That, that would probably done through the Department of Health as well?
Yes. Yep. The other hot topic is, is centered around masking. As I said before, the, the guidance that came out of SED, there was, there was really no dispute about, especially after they came out with their FAQ in terms of how it should be interpreted recently. But again, there, there has been, there has been, I would say, more, more stringent language used by the governor during his addresses over the course of the past week. And there is a, a local task force that is supporting school districts and superintendents in their, in their planning. And we saw more restrictive language around masking again, which is understandable. I would say the general principles still apply. Teachers have always had the discretion to ask students to mask during instruction. They also have had discretion as it relates to allowing students to take, to take off their mask if they're appropriately distanced or if they feel like students need masking breaks throughout the course of the day. I think the biggest change that I saw in the guidance that came out on Friday last week centered around the first sentence where it said, you know, students and staff should mask at all times with the exception of meals. Because that was, that was different than what was in the SED guidance. And it was different than what we had been telling parents to that point. So the biggest takeaway that, that I wanted folks to realize was that, you know, if health officials are saying that students should mask most of the time, that students and staff will be masked more, then they will not significantly more. So the general guidance would be students mask all the time when they're on buses or when they're moving about in hallways or when they're moving about. or when they're moving about even in classrooms in situations where distancing can't be maintained. And they should be masked most of the time during the instructional day. However, what's also required is that there will be masking breaks throughout the course of the day so that students have the opportunity to take masks off when they're appropriately distanced. And I think that the real work is to help teachers identify throughout the instructional day when it's most appropriate to allow students to take those breaks. Whether it's times where they can go outside or whether they're distanced and doing a quiet activity in a classroom. I think that's, that's the real work there, to try and clarify the issue. But you'll notice that the Governor hasn't mandated certain language, that SED hasn't mandated certain language. And the Department of Health, both the local Department of Health, the State Department of Health, has not mandated certain language. Their guidelines or recommendations specifically so that folks who are working in buildings have a certain degree of flexibility as it relates to masking, depending on the activities that they're doing at the time. And quite honestly, that's something that superintendents advocated for. Is to say you can't expect teachers and students to put on a mask the second they walk in and never take it off for seven hours. There has to be a certain degree of flexibility. So it's, it's a really interesting conversation, that conversation around masking, because there are some folks who say, look, we need to have a very clear mandate and we should be wearing it all the time. And, and then there are, are folks who, who are familiar and say, it should be parental prerogative and my, my child shouldn't be forced to wear a mask at all. When we put out the initial guidance, I received a lot of emails from folks around asking if the guidance around masking could be more strict. And then when the language became a little bit more strict in that last E news, then I received some, some feedback from folks saying that they, they thought that it was, it was too much as far as asking students to mask most of the day and only being given masking breaks. So we'll, you know, what, our commitment as a district is to continue to follow the recommendations set forth by our local Department of Health. So that was a really long-winded explanation, but there is, there's a lot going on and I kind of wanted to frame it for you before we let each, each assistant soup give you an update in the areas that, that they oversee. Why don't we start with Nerlan? I was looking at you, so you were looking at me. So you seem like you're ready to go.
No, I'm gonna say you covered most of mine. Well, I'll, I'll start with the, some of the special ed feedback that we've been receiving in terms of identifying group one, group two for the hybrid model. We talked about the English language learners and, and some of their needs. Again, there, we had some students who, on remote, they did better. And some of the teachers were reporting that their participation was a little bit higher. So we understand that, that, that is a group that we need to continue to pay attention to just because they have different needs, especially the language acquisition need. And so we talked about that in terms of, okay, do we look at a four-day schedule for them as well? With the students with disabilities, we also kept that around. And then we landed on the students with the most learning and also physical needs. And that's why you see the NISA classes, were one of the classes that we considered and also the fifteen-one. And, and we felt that obviously we'll have to take a look at the I-COT and other models that the students are in. Consultant teacher, we do have students who struggle within the consultant teacher model as well. And so, but we wanted to start somewhere, at least with the neediest population, especially with physical and also educational needs. So that's why we put these students in the group three. The reason why we kept the Webster Learning Center for four days as well, we considered that, first of all, for social distancing. It is, we have a building where we have the program there. There's about sixty students. And in addition, again, there, you have a population that's very needy, not only in terms of academic skills, but also it's a mixture of special ed students and regular ed and the mental health needs are also significantly great there. So we figured to start with, not that we're not going to look at this, because as, as a matter of fact, you know, one of the things that we keep saying is that we constantly have to think about flexibility and also pivot in, right, in this situation that we're in. It's not that we have forgotten about some of the other students and their needs, but we needed to start somewhere. We definitely are in conversation right now in terms of, now that we have some groups that are set right now, doesn't mean that we're not going to take a look at how these youngsters are doing overall. But at the same time, we also have to take into consideration some of the related services that these youngsters have on their IEPs, the number of related services some of them may have. And then there are times where we have to start thinking in terms of when we bring them in for two-day in-person learning, we also have to consider other opportunities, maybe on another day, dependent on the level of related services that they have. That way, they work directly with the therapist within the building. So those are the things that we are considering. I've heard the messages. He's not the, the individual who wrote you about the I-COT is not the only person. I've talked to a couple of parents as well. But I let them know that it doesn't stop there. Just because we currently have a plan in place to start the school year with, just like we've always done, we have to take a look at what do students need. I always talk about, everybody needs shoes, but everybody need, need a shoe that fit. And so those are the things that I am currently in conversation with our Director of Special Ed, looking at the related services individuals. And of course, there's a lot of other domino effects in terms of staffing and so on and so forth. And then we have to be mindful, even of the ones that we gave the opportunity to come to four-day, right? Because of their medical needs, they are not able to come in in person. And thus, we have to support their needs while they're on remote as well. So that's those pieces. We are definitely working through those. We don't have a lot of answers right now. And so we don't want to leave parents to this false sense that we're going to make sure that their I-COT students or their CT students come for four days. But one of the things that we can say without a shadow of a doubt is that we heard them, we hear them, but we needed to start somewhere. And so that's the first. In terms of health and safety, as a district, we have never wavered on student safety or staff safety. And, and as you know, that's one of the reasons why some of the buildings have been reconfigured and construction has happened, and that will never change. So a lot of the things that we did well as Russian Riada, those are not gonna go away. Because if you look at the guidance in terms of district safety plans and things like that, the state will tell you, we still need you to do evacuation. We still need you to do those drills to really teach students how to remain safe. And we are going to be mindful, even if we were to open other entrance and exit doors, to make sure that appropriate staffing is provided so that they can have proper supervision. We're not just gonna let anybody into the building. So I think Bowman, I talked really nicely about trying to limit the number of individuals coming in and out of building, not only for parents and guardians, but also for staff who travels, right? Because we do have staff like myself whose home is here at the admin building, but sometimes I have a need to go to different buildings. But I want to make sure that when I go visit those buildings, that I'm there for a specific purpose and I make sure that I stop in the main office for the reasons that Bo mentioned. If we do have a positive confirmed case in a particular building, we have to work directly, very closely with the Department of Health. And we have had those situations before outside of COVID. If you recall, we've had a meningitis situation before. And immediately, we contacted the Department of Health. We work in tandem with them. This is not separate, right? We work in tandem with them. We formulate an action plan. They told us what they needed to do in the community to keep people safe and to make sure that all of those who needed follow-up, that they did. And also, we worked on communications together. What are we going to tell the community at large and what we needed to tell the school community? So that model has not changed. And yesterday, Dr. Mendoza sent some guidance. And like I told Bo, these things are not surprising to us. They're not new to us because those are the things that we do. And anytime when we encounter, especially because COVID is so new and people are still learning some new stuff about it, if we have a question that we cannot answer for a staff member or district personnel or a parent, we have the COVID headline that we can call. We can always depend on them. And in addition, don't forget, we also have nurses, right? They are in the field. They keep up with a lot of that information. We can also rely on them for some medical advice in addition to knowing that we also have the Department of Health and, who's willing to coordinate with us. They sent us a list of things and most of the thing says, the Department of Health will, the Department of Health will. Our job in the district is to first make sure that anyone who enters the building, that we know who they are. We keep a record of them so that if a case occur and they need to do contact tracing, they'll get accurate records from us. We have a visitor management system, as you know, that we've implemented for a, a number of years. It's called the Raptor Visitor Management System. Most people's licenses are in that system, unless you are a new parent, new to the district, and we will have that. So we have that process in place. And we have those screening procedures that you, you all are familiar with, that we will be asking. They're automatically, it's live right now on the Raptor system. Prior to allowing anyone to come in, we're going to ask these questions. If a person says yes to one or two of these things, the reality is, we have to let them know that we cannot let them enter the building. However, we're still going to figure out what their needs are. We can meet their needs in a different way other than allowing them to enter the building. For the student side, that's where, and tomorrow we'll get a chance to talk to some of the parents, but I'll give you a quick overview. For the student side, we really need parents to be involved, right? We are going to do our part in terms of social distancing, all of the cleaning procedures, making sure that students get instruction, those hygiene instructions that the state talked about. Our district nurse practitioner already vetted tons of videos for elementary and secondary to make sure that we do all of the appropriate instruction necessary so that the students get used to the routines of how, what we expect in, in terms of etiquette, hygiene, et cetera. But we're asking parents to be a partner with us. If there's any time where parents can be a great partner, this is the time. Because one of the things that we absolutely have to do is do that questionnaire with students. So we have contracted with a partner, which is called Frontline. It's a health management system where every night a parent will receive those questions. And they have to take the temperature of their kids and answer whether their child has a fever and all of those other COVID questions. We receive that information as they complete that. So in the morning, prior to a student arrival to school, we'll get an overview of who completed that survey and who did not and who completed it and decided because of students are showing symptoms, they have to keep their children home. So after that survey, depending on the way you answer that survey, you're either good to go, put your kids on the bus, we want to receive them, or hmm, keep them home because you have answered yes to some of these questions. And then, of course, we have to do some follow-up with the family and so on and so forth. Even the Department of Health, they've given us a list of all of the testing sites that they will have because they're saying, if a student is showing symptoms or a staff member is showing symptoms, you send them home immediately or isolate them, first of all. We have to have isolation rooms. Then the nurse will do an assessment and so on and so forth. But the next thing is to try to get them out of the building as soon as possible. But in addition, if it's a staff member, you let them know how to follow up. And if it's a student, it's the same thing. Including giving them a handout of that sheet with all of the testing sites. So, you know, things are constantly changing. As they evolve, we pivot. But the good news is that today, we spent the first half of the morning really reviewing some of these things. We've had the opportunity to have some of these conversations at a student management meeting that we held about a week ago with all of the building leaders. But this was an opportunity to get all leaders of head of the departments to know about some of these procedures because the reality is, we're going to have to even limit their movement within a building. So you have facility guys who are going in for plumbing issues, et cetera. What we're asking them to do is stop in the main office. First, let them know you are there. They will take a record that you were there and then you go do your stuff. You can't visit with teachers anymore as you used to. You know, there are times where I'm going to the building and stopping in the nurse's office to say hello or the social workers, worker's office. Now you have to go where you need to go and limit your movement as much as possible. So these are the things that we have in place. There's many more stuff that we can talk about from the mental health piece. The survey will go out next week, Monday. We wanted to send it out this week, but there was too much communication happening. So we're gonna do that. There's one for staff because we need to assess the, the wellness of the staff and what they need as they're coming back. They need to tell us. Same thing from a parent perspective, what are they seeing? But then we also want to get students' perspective. So if a student is in grades K six, we're asking the parents, don't fill out the survey on their behalf. Sit down with them, explain the questions to them and let them tell you what they're feeling. Because as a parent, you'll have the opportunity to complete your own survey to, for us to get your perspective. But we also need the student perspective. Each building will have their results. We've talked to them about how they can use that result to make sure that we have the appropriate supports in place, not only for students, but as you always made it clear, also for staff. So I'll stop there because I know I'm not the only one. So I'll be happy later on to answer any questions.
I want to ask you a quick question about the health screening process that you guys are implementing. And is that through an email we're gonna send to parents? And if a parent does not use the email, any other way we're going to be implementing that? Or is it something that the student gets to school? Someone moved through that?
Yeah, so we're going to send that, that in an email to a parent. They can access it through their phone or through other devices. But there are times where we're gonna have parents who may have an email and they just didn't complete it. Or students who are chronically, or parents of students who are not completing it. We will have a process where we can do that in the building as well. But for the most part, we want at least, I'm hoping, ninety-five percent of people complying with that at all times. The other piece, to your point, that we are doing, we have identified some families who we did not have an email address for in the system. So this week, as of today, my secretary went and called all of these families and made sure that we had an email address. So the other thing that we're doing as well, there's something called a blue card. So we updated the blue card to identify a language that the family would prefer. Because just because this person speak another language at home, that doesn't mean that they would prefer communication in that particular language. And what we're finding out, it's better to, as a family, what mode of communication would you like to receive this in? So there's two things happening. We're updating people's emails who doesn't have an email, to, to your point, so that they can receive the correct communication. But at the same time, we're also asking families, you know, because most families want to receive it in English even though they speak a different language. But the ones who do not speak English at all, we want to make sure that we are being responsive to their needs. And you'll see that under the parent engagement priorities, that we're putting that as a huge focus. Like we really need to work at making sure parents receive stuff in the mode of language, preferred mode of language, to the greatest extent possible.
Andy, why don't we work around, around the horn?
All right. So once the students do their self-assessment at home and the, the parents determine they're safe to send in, first place they hit is our school bus. So as Bo had mentioned, masks will be required at all times on the school bus by both the bus driver and the students. And we'll make sure the bus driver has a supply of masks. So if a student gets on and forgotten their mask, we'll have one available for them to wear. The loading protocol, they'll load towards the back. So the first stops, they'll be told to go towards the back. And we'll keep working our way forward. They'll have assigned seats once the routes are, are set, so they know that. And then it'll be the opposite. When they get off the bus, they'll, they'll disembark from the front of the bus, one at a time, socially distanced, and work their way towards the back of the bus. Parent drop-off and pickup, the, the schools, elementary schools are looking at a way to elongate the, the timing for the parent drop-off because we anticipate a lot more parents driving and dropping off their kids. And that pickup also, there won't be, we won't allow the parents into the building or into the main entrance to pick up their child. So the schools are setting up processes. They have somebody outside, check ID and then call in and have the student sent out sent out when their parent's there to be picked up. So they're working on that. And then the disinfecting of the buses. Bus drivers will have wipes, disinfecting wipes. So after each load of students, they'll disinfect the handrail or any high-touch things in the front of the bus. And then at the end of each shift, typically, they do what they call a child find. They have to go back and make sure there's no students left on the bus asleep in the seat or something. So when they get to the back, we have these foggers that actually work off the air system for the brakes. So it does a fine mist, and they'll work their way forward and just disinfect the whole bus after each shift. So buses will be disinfected twice a day. So once they get off the bus, they go into the school. And as we mentioned, there'll be multiple entrances at each school to allow the kids in. Not to allow parents or visitors, because really, they'll be minimal if at all. But during entry into the school from the buses, they'll have the multiple entrances in, so they can socially distance. And then, next place, kids will go either classroom or the cafeteria. The big change we're making at the cafeteria is we're limiting choices. So it's not going to be as appealing to kids. And it used to be the law forced us to offer options. We couldn't tell kids what to have, so they picked an entree, they picked a fruit, a vegetable, a drink, and that takes time. So those of you who are visiting your kid's school, you know lunch lines are long. We need to expedite them, because we're setting up social distance markers, and we don't want them to wind around the whole school. So we do get a waiver, so we're going to pre-tray the meal. So all they do is, they'll have one or two or three options. I want this, this, or that meal, grab the tray and take it to the cash register. And we're also encouraging prepaid, so there's no cash. For students who do bring in cash, there won't be change. If there's money due to them, it'll go on their account. So we're not going to be handling cash. We put Plexigla, or Lexon shields around the cash registers and work with the schools for flows. And we have floor markers, so the kids are socially distanced, and they're going to pace when they allow the classes in. But we're hoping by speeding up the line, that we can maintain the social distancing. But the drawback is, it will limit choices. So there won't be snacks at elementary, there'll be minimal snacks at secondary. So it won't be as appealing, but safety is the first thing. And then, facilities, we're going through, we're marking all the facilities. Floor marking, so there's a red line down the middle of every corridor. And then on each side, there's six feet circles for social distancing. And three feet from the circle, there's a directional arrow. So there's traffic flow, just a visual reminder of kids on what side to walk on. And as Bo mentioned, we've gone into the classrooms and measured how we can fit the furniture for socially distancing. So it'll be, all the desks pretty much will be six feet apart. There are going to be a few exceptions at the secondary level, where they have more kids. Typically, it's a maximum of fourteen desks we can squeeze in that are socially distanced. So if there is a class with more than fourteen, we'll put on the desk shields that Bo talked about. So they'll still be six feet apart, but we'll add another row and squeeze it. So instead of being six feet distance in front of, behind each other, there'll be four feet of a plastic shield, so they can't breathe on the person in front of them.
Andy, can I just interrupt for a second? Because I think it's an important note, and we're still getting a handle on how many students we're talking about. But certainly, the number of students that are going to be participating in the Remote Learning Academy will impact the number of students that we have in buildings on a daily basis, and could ultimately impact class sizes and section size. Because as of right now, we have over a thousand students who signed up. Initially, we had, I think, fourteen hundred forty-six submissions, but there were some duplicates in there, and some that came in. It's like, those just wanted to test to be like, is it gonna work? So we're cleaning up those numbers. But we had, I mean, I'm comfortable saying that we have more than, well over twenty percent of our student population that are going to be participating in that model. So as we talk about, you know, what classroom configuration will look like after that, once we sift out the numbers, and then we also had some people who said, "I missed the deadline, but can you at least put me on the waitlist?" And, you know, we're looking at how we can accommodate those folks. I think there's a good chance that we can. So again, that will impact the numbers, and then ultimately impact, you know, how you can set up a classroom, and how many people you have in classrooms and in a building at once. So I apologize for interrupting, but I just wanted to say that.
Yeah. So we're hoping not to have any or very few of the desk shields. Nobody was very thrilled with the idea, but it was for safety purpose. But because the desks are set so far apart, it's consuming most of the real estate in the classroom. So we've had teachers come in last week and this week to clean out all their excess furniture. There'll be no more area carpets at the elementary schools, which were a great teaching tool, but the kids bunched together on them. So we need to promote social distancing, plus you can't just affect them effectively. So the carpets have come out, and lots of the soft-sided furniture, beanbag chairs, all of that's coming out. And excess furniture that some teachers have, whether it's cards or bookshelves, things like that. Because the idea to be effectively disinfected, you have to be thoroughly cleaned. And so now that it's a two-stage process, we need the cleaning to be easier to do, so it can be done effectively and quickly. And then, we're going to be disinfecting, so we're ordering. Actually, last March, we ordered forty of these backpack electrostatic disinfecters. We got one in, we were promised delivery in two weeks, every week for the next, and a couple of weeks ago, they were canceled. So we went to hand pump sprayers that aren't quite as effective. The goblets are a little bit bigger with the liquid. But we just found a local vendor who can give us electrostatic sprayers. And thank goodness, you passed the resolution, we don't have to bid. Because now, if we order this week, we'll have all we want by the end. They gave us five. We already got five in the test, they worked well. We're gonna have them all in by the end of the month. So it'll be, they can spray an entire classroom in a minute or two. It's a fine mist, and it settles everywhere. And once it settles, you give it ten minutes, it kills any viruses, and the room's disinfected. And those are what we'll be using to clean all the common areas. And throughout the day, we'll be doing wipe downs of like drinking fountains and handles and things like that. So we'll keep on top of the disinfecting. But that's the protocol. Then the last thing is, we've been stocking up on PPE, which can be hard to get. So whenever we can find a source, Ken Nelson thinks he wins the lottery about once a week when he finds a new source of hand sanitizer. It's always limited quantities, but we've stocked up enough that every classroom will have hand sanitizer and have wipes available. We have plenty of the surgical mask, the disposable mask for people who forget it. We'll have gowns for people who might have to work closely with students. We have plenty of gloves. So anything, we have face shields. So anything, each school is setting up an area. So whatever a teacher needs or feels comfortable with, they'll have access to. And then the custodian will replenish the school supply from the warehouse. So we want everybody to have everything they need, and more if they want their comfort level. So that's it for facilities and operations. Any questions?
How will the buses handle students who are in like a charter, private, or parochial schools? How is that getting addressed?
We have to provide transportation. Whenever we're open, and open means either remotely or in-person. So we have to provide it, and our, we, most of those schools will be open five days a week. So we'll provide normal transportation to them. But there are a few schools that we might not be able to do the twenty-two seating. So we'll let the private schools know. If all of our in-district schools, we can sit one per seat maximum, unless they're a sibling. But there's a few of the private schools that may have more than that on the bus. But that'll be up to the private school to determine whether or not that's acceptable. But yeah, we'll be running normal runs to private parochial charter schools. So if they're open five days a week, we'll transport five days a week.
That was another hot topic question around transportation is, once we came out and said, "Listen, you know, we were close to being able to provide in-person instruction for K-6." People said, "But we'll go back out there and administer the survey again, and see if you can get enough parents," so that, you know, to opt out of transportation where you could adhere to the thirty-student maximum. And there were a couple of different factors which played into the decision to move forward with K-12 hybrid. One was the timing, right? Like, we were out of time. We had to get our plans in place and be ready to submit them that Friday. And then, once we did that, it is in a situation where you can turn around and say, on a dime, okay, let's, you know, let's explore this other option. And then if we get enough parents, then we could just flip on a dime and go back to this concept. It doesn't work like that. As I said before, it's extremely complex. And, you know, every minute matters for us right now in terms of getting plans in place. The other thing was, we weren't, we did test the waters with an initial survey, and I think we had somewhere around five hundred families who said they would transport. But a significant number of those families would, under normal circumstances, they wouldn't utilize our busing services. So you can't really count them. I mean, we transport, when you factor in, to your point, Jennifer, charter schools and private schools, we transport over six thousand kids daily. So essentially, in order to meet that threshold, where you're staying under thirty students, and you're not putting kids from different households in the same seat, and you're talking a reduction of probably two thousand, twenty-five hundred kids in terms of a decrease in ridership. And we just didn't think, you know, that that would be doable. Outside, even if we did have the time, I don't think that you would be able to reduce ridership by thirty-five percent. So again, that's something that comes up over and over to me directly and in other places. And so I just wanted to address it before we move on to Deena.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. With the bus drivers, are they given special masks to use when they're fogging their buses? Or how is that working?
They'll have access to face shields, so they'll have a mask. And they'll have the KN-95 mask, which are a little bit higher level. But really, the stuff that we use, it's safe on food surfaces. So the MSDS sheets don't even require masks or special equipment. But clearly, because of the frequency we're doing it, they'll have masks, we'll make the KN-95 mask available and face shields available. Or actually, we've also, for the bus drivers, we're trying to source goggles. That might be easier for them to use, so they'll have both.
Okay, and then my second question is, is, so these kids whose parents don't fill out the email every day, they're still getting on a bus.
Yes, they are.
So you said you are trying to provide bus drivers with goggles. Do they, can they wear face shields while they're driving? How does that, because that's my concern. If someone is sick, and they haven't filled out one of those forms, they're the first exposure.
Right. You know, the system isn't perfect. But I, they should have a mask on. If a child gets on and doesn't have a mask, we have to identify a space that there's no more closer than six feet from anybody. If we can't identify it, we won't let them on, and we'll call a small bus to come transport them. So as long as the child has a mask on and they get on, you know, it's going to be brief exposure to anybody, because they're one per seat. So it's not perfect. But yeah, the students who haven't answered the questionnaire and may potentially have the temperature, we won't know until they're in the school. And that's why it's mask on all the time, until kids are in their classroom at six feet apart.
So, but can the drivers drive with face shields or anything?
The face shields are clear, but they're not ideal. We've actually asked the vendor if they could look into making polarized face shields. But what we're telling the drivers, we're trying not to fill the seat closest to the driver if we can help it. They'll be facing forward, so they don't have to wear a face shield. And, I mean, like me, my glasses fog up, no matter what kind of mask I have. We'll let them pull their mask down, because they're facing forward. And we're asking them to keep their window open, to keep the fresh air going in.
All right, thank you.
But whenever the kids get on and off, mask up, and preferably face shield as well.
Thank you.
A kid will be given a mask if they forgot there's something?
Right, yeah. Every bus will have a supply. So if they start to get on with no mask, the bus driver will hand them one.
And the bus driver has the capability of telling the child, if they don't have six feet, and they refuse to put a mask on, then that bus driver has the capability of saying, "You can't get on," and they call another bus for that child?
Right. We're hoping, given the high numbers of opt-outs, we're hoping not to have a full twenty-two. So at least one kid we can place without a mask and keep them six feet away. But yeah, if the bus were full and no mask. I mean, we do have some children, for medical or social-emotional reasons, have been pre-identified. So those are planned for. But if it's somebody who just refuses, if we don't have capacity to distance them, they'll be, they won't be allowed on, and we'll call another, we'll call dispatch and send another, a small bus out when we're able. So it might take a little time, but that's the protocol. So they gotta be either six feet away or wait for another bus.
Okay, thank you.
I was reading through the FAQ while I was trying to listen again, so I apologize if I missed this. But will it be kind of made clear on the buses or in the buildings or at any point? You know, what cleaning agents are being used to disinfect the buses and for the matter, the buildings, et cetera? Is that something on people's minds?
Right. Once we release the full detail document, that we'll be releasing in a couple of weeks, that has all of our cleaners listed on it. And we have had a few parents call, you know, with heightened concern, and we share that. Anybody who asks, we certainly provide the information. But it will be online within a couple of weeks.
All right, let's talk instruction.
Okay. All right, I'll try to summarize and be brief. I know sometimes when we get talking about instruction, I can get a little yappy, so I'll keep it, my comments few. In preparation for the reopening, we have developed a framework for our hybrid and our remote learning programs. We've had a concept that we've been able to take to print, as far as thinking about our programming, what instruction would look like, a little bit of a mock schedule, just so parents and students can visualize what their days will look like, both in-person as well as on remote days. We've also started to identify the supports that'll be needed. So the Remote Learning Academy plan has been posted on our website. And I hope that the hybrid will be posted tomorrow morning in preparation for our community meetings this week. Both these concepts have been worked on ever since the plan came out from the state in the middle of July. And then, once we decided we were doing the hybrid K-12, we had to move quickly to put the conceptual ideas to print. So you never want to take anything to print unless you've been able to work through some of the details. So we're very pleased with the framework that we have come up with, and believe that will be a good guiding document for all of us to work from. The ones that are on the website are the ones really from a student and family perspective. And we're working on documents to be able to share with their teachers to think about, giving them the information that they need to see it from the teacher perspective. With that being said, as we think about a hybrid model and a remote learning framework, we had to really go through and identify programs that are most essential, and now start looking at course offerings. As Bo indicated earlier, that the enrollment for the Remote Academy is much greater than we ever anticipated, and that waiting list is getting longer every day. So therefore, it's looking like we can offer some more things, the Remote Academy, that we didn't think we could originally offer, which will also impact a little bit of our hybrid model, too. So once we get the confirmed numbers, and that's why it's so important to have the information, that's why we did have to have a deadline. And we have this week to kind of work through it a little bit more as more information goes out to parents. But by the end of the week, we'll be able to firm this up. We'll have a better handle on, especially at the secondary level, what programs you can offer in both, in both the hybrid and the remote. Not only is enrollment a factor, we gotta look at our staffing, make sure we have enough certifications to cover both programs, and see how that all works out. Because we're trying to put as many full-time employees in the Remote Learning Academy, because we know it's gonna be a whole different kind of structure, and support's needed, and PD, and keep separate, try not to have like traveling teachers from a hybrid model to a remote model as much as possible. That'll be a little bit more difficult at the high school level. But Pat and I will be working closely, trying to work that through with programming FTE with the principals.
And I just want to stop here again. I know a source of frustration for parents was, well, if I go into the Remote Learning Academy, will you offer this class, a very specific class in high school, this particular AP class, or this ASL class? And in some cases, we knew that we wouldn't be able to do that. But in other cases, we, we knew that we wouldn't be able to do that. But in other cases, to Dina's point, what people didn't realize was that in some ways, enrollment was wagging the dog. Do you know what I mean? You could, it, it was dependent on how many students enrolled. So you had to wait to see how many students we were going to have enrolled before we could have a sense of what we were going to be able to offer. But parents would get frustrated sometimes when, I couldn't, I'd say, well, it's depending on enrollment, you know? And they'd say, well, how am I supposed to make a decision? And, you know, in the beginning, I was reluctant to guide parents, but then I became a little bit more assertive to say, well, if you're more concerned about health and safety, then you might want to consider the remote option. If your priority is that you want all the, all the AP classes that you've always had access to, then you're probably going to want to think about sending them back into a hybrid model. But it's, I wanted to make that point because, you know, that was, and her point about why we had to hold to the deadline was really important, too. Because we, I mean, we would have staffed this months ago under normal circumstances. So I just wanted to highlight that. Sorry.
However, what we have stated in our remote learning plan and what we will definitely offer remains true. So we made sure we didn't overpromise and underdeliver.
Right.
We're letting parents know that, that you can definitely, you know, count on the required course, courses for graduation, and you can, you know, count on the load, you know? And we're looking at our options for when you get into the level four and five and combining them. So we know that the electives, you know, will vary. But as far as the core courses, most definitely, we'll be offering them. So the good news is, in the plan that went to print, is what we felt confident that when parents were making decisions, they knew the, the aspects of the program that we were confident we could deliver. And at this point, anything else that we might add on will be due to the enrollment. And now we can offer maybe a few more things. But we won't know that for about another two weeks. Okay? As far as our programming goes, we've looked closely at assessments, directors and principals and myself. We've had a lot of Google meets over this. And we went through and we identified the most essential assessments we'll be giving this year. And that'll be reviewed on Thursday, when I spent a whole day meeting with principals and directors, and then rolled out later to teachers this month when we meet with them. So we have definitely looked at the assessments that we give. We're cutting back quite a bit. And even at the secondary level, where we still have to give required course assessments, I've asked all directors to work closely with teachers to really think about, how do you make those assessments practical, manageable, and equitable in a hybrid model as well as a remote model? So we are looking at making some adjustments to our assessments. With that being said, the curriculum remains intact because we still are responsible for teaching all the learning standards. And at this point in time, assessments are still a go from New York State for this year. There are still administration dates out there. However, with us really zoning in and making our assessments very succinct for this year, it'll help teachers decide what is most essential from the content and the skills of the curriculum to really focus on. And with that being said, we have teachers and some instructional coaches and directors that have worked on some model units and lessons to take a curriculum map and think about what's most essential. Like, if this is the end of mine, this is the assessment we're working towards, and how do you go through and identify that most essential content and skills? What do you do with the students synchronous, when they're in front of me? And what learning activity should they be working on when it's asynchronous? And we'll be spending a lot of time with teachers at the end of the month, is helping them understand blended learning methodologies, just because asynchronous instruction that occurs remotely isn't just homework. It has to be very purposeful, meaningful, interactive. So we have an extensive amount of PD that we have been developing over the last two months around this. And that will be offered to our teachers both in person. And we have a suite of blended learning PD remote models that they can grab anytime they need it. And we're going to have a whole blended learning website that we'll be putting out later this month for administrators and teachers, so they can go in and get that virtual learning as they need it, so that our teachers can really understand how best to deliver this program. We also are making sure that our technology and connectivity is good and strong. And we've spent a lot of time making sure that we can sustain the device deployment. Chromebooks are on backorder for about six months. And, you know, we have kindergartners that need their new ones coming in, and we have a lot of broken ones and serviced ones. We have the ones that are coming out of their three-year cycle. So we are working very hard with our vendors to get as many Chromebooks here as quick as we can. But there is a major problem in getting devices because they've had a tremendous amount of orders. But we've had good relations with our vendors because we've been a longstanding customer there. So we're hoping they're going to pull through to at least put the kindergartners in play and be able to, at least if everyone can get their new Chromebooks for the year, give any ones that have been broken that we can replace. So we'll be giving updates on that as the time gets closer. We've also looked at some more protective softwares. We've upped our Gold Guardian supports and finding ways to make sure that we remain keeping our kids safe on that, in their Chromebooks when they're out there working virtually. And we've also cleaned up a lot of things on our Google platform. We have worked with School Tool, and we now have School Tool working with Google and Classroom for grading and reporting purposes. So we've done a lot of things on the tech end. We really worked on a lot of this work back in June, when we were waiting for all the guidance to come in. We thought, well, these are things that we can make decisions on. So when it comes to technology connectivity, Brad and I spent a lot of time in June and July getting a lot of things polished up for this school year. So we're real happy with that, as well as the Wi-Fi availabilities for our parents. Our counselors, teachers, and principals work with families that are in need of Wi-Fi. We have purchased hotspots. And we have partnered with Verizon in order to be able to give service to those hotspots. So we'll work in collaboration with our families who need Wi-Fi or families that are struggling with having the appropriate bandwidth, because we have multiple students working at home. If you don't have strong Wi-Fi, your students do run into some difficulties. So we're very pleased with a lot of the work we've done around technology and connectivity as well. I think the most important thing I want to say from the Office of Instruction and as well as our Technology Department is that, you know, we're gonna, we have our best plans going to print right now. We have our concepts, the major items covered, a lot of details to work through. But what, we're all going to be mindful, administrators and teachers working collaboratively, that we're going to closely monitor how things are going. And everyone's going to need to be very flexible. When it doesn't work right away, we can't knee jerk either. But with time, when we learn what is working and what's not working, we will make the appropriate adjustments. And I'm very confident that we have a good plan in development. But know that throughout the year, there will be things that we're going to have to respond to, maybe react differently to. For example, if we find that we need more support at the intermediate level and need to bring something like REED 181 down to the intermediate, we'll respond accordingly. So we're trying to start out slow and focus on, on the aspects that we feel as though that we're best situated and prepared to focus on, keep things as most familiar for teachers and for our students, and then grow and expand from there. And again, some of the things that we're putting to place right now, we might have to change in a couple of months. And if we need to, we'll do it. So that's going to kind of be the theme, just to continue to monitor and adjust as we go along and remain flexible to meet the needs of the students and the staff.
Questions. What is the process like by which families that need more bandwidth and/or Wi-Fi access acquire it?
So we're working on more of a communication process to work between our buildings and with the Technology Services Department. But what we've learned is, our counselors and teachers did a great job staying connected with their families. And usually, the first sign when a student wasn't engaged, usually there was an issue with Wi-Fi. So we just reach out. So we'll have our school principals, we'll be in communication with the Technology Department, once they get information from the teachers and the counselors, and how their respective systems are going to work in their schools. We're working out through some of those details. But there'll be a lot of that communication with our families. Especially like our E&amp;L teachers did a great job this past spring, letting us know, students that we're having some difficulty. So it's going to be a lot of communication, collaboration in the school building, and the principal will notify Technology Services.
Using that blue card information that Nirlan talked about before?
Yes.
While we're communicating with the families and meeting them where they're at. So it's, it's more on the teachers at this point to recognize who's, because they can tell who's connecting, who's not, who's logging in, who's not, and them reaching out. I mean, is there an avenue for the families to reach out the other way?
Obviously, reach out to the teachers. That would be the first part, because they have that constant, you know, connection with the teachers. So we would encourage them to reach out to their teachers and their counselors. Quite often, we find that our families, you know, who need support, might not always feel comfortable sharing that with, you know, a couple of different teachers. So that's why we're very careful and protective to respect people's privacy, too.
Sure.
So our counselors are very well trained in that. And quite often, what you'll find is, a teacher will contact the counselor, say, I'm curious, you know, I don't want to, you know, and they'll do some reach out, too. So.
I just, I remember during the earliest days of the pandemic, it was more about the city school district, but it was some, I mean, you know, the percentage of kids that didn't have high-speed internet access at home. But then, within those that did, those for whom the only high-speed internet access was on a smartphone, over cellular networks, basically. So I don't know what those numbers translate to in Russian, but I know those are non-zero numbers. And so just making sure that we're staying on top of it. It sounds like the teachers are being proactive in that way.
And we'll be working more with the principals on that, develop those systems within their schools.
Are plans across, let's say, K through three, for remote learning the same? Like, let's say, a third grader in Winslow would be getting the same instruction time with one-on-one with a teacher. I know the plans are not finalized yet, but do you have an idea of how, is it consistent throughout?
Yep. So here is how we're going to work our Remote Learning Academy. And I was just telling Bo before this, we've been contacted by a couple other of my counterparts that have seen our plan being posted to find out more about it. We're running it as a Remote Learning Academy. It's basically a school within a school. And when we really stepped back and thought about, once we got the guidance from the state in the middle of July that you had to offer this remote option, you know, how can you do this in a very meaningful way for our students and for our teachers? And when we threw around a lot of ideas, and, you know, I used some key people that have been instrumental in the technology work over the last six years and all the learning that we've learned when we've attended different conferences or even had people come in to collaborate with us, we realized that this online learning is totally different than in school or even a hybrid model. So what we want to do is create an online school, that's our Remote Learning Academy. So our first graders, let's say, will have their online learning class working with them. And that'll be students that could be from Winslow, or they could be from Crane or from File. So they're going to be a school within a school. Okay? And that way, that they have that feeling of a community. And we'll have teachers assigned to them per grade level, you know, per courses. And then these teachers who are assigned to the school within the school, our Remote Learning Academy, they're going to need a totally different approach to their professional development and supports that they're going to need. So we can design professional development specifically for them, so that they can be ready and prepared to give a true 100% remote online learning experience for our kids. So it's a totally different, you know, and that's why it's so many questions that Heather and Travis have been responding to our community. I think people are trying to understand, well, what does this mean? Will it be a, a Winslow teacher just hopping out for two hours from her first-grade classroom to teach these first-grade classrooms? No. These, our Remote Learning Academy will be given the full attention and the supports needed to be an online school. And that's how we're going to design it. And honestly, you know, I'm real excited about both their models. I keep telling Bo, this Remote Learning Academy has a lot of potential, you know? And I talked to Bo a lot about, we ought to stop thinking about what education in school has always been and what it should be and could be, you know? And our, we want our students to learn very similar to the environment that they live in and for the world we're preparing them for. So there's a lot of learning here for all of us, and most importantly, our students. So we're taking it as an opportunity to think about how to provide a totally new learning experience for our students that, and, you know, there's many students that will respond well in this environment, and that's probably why their parents chose it. So we're looking forward to being able to work on this. A lot of work to be done. We just need people to be patient, and we'll be flexible and grow along the way. But I think it's going to be a great adventure for our teachers and our students.
Will, um, you, will the teachers be able to get in all the requirements as, I'm thinking more of like the high school, like the requirements for lab hours or requirements for like different AP classes? Will the two days a week be able to get those labs and, or whatever, the requirements for the state or the AP?
So they're giving us a lot of leeway on as far as like seat time in classrooms this year, because obviously, you're doing a hybrid or you're doing a remote. So the seat time is based upon the learning that's occurring, assignments that are given into the, and meeting the teacher expectations for it. As far as lab requirements, labs can be done within a classroom setting. So we'll do a lot of our hands-on labs when the kids are in their in-person learning. But we've also purchased a lot of online resources that have like simulations and labs that can be completed online. So there could be some lab activities that occur asynchronous, as well as synchronous when they're in school. So we're confident that we're going to be able to meet any kind of seat time requirement or lab requirement within the models we're putting together and based off of the new guidance that has come out.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well said, Dina. Last but not least, Pat's going to talk about the impact of staffing and some of the human resource related issues that we need to consider as we're thinking about reopening.
My colleagues have covered some of what I, what impacts human resources, so I'll just kind of fill in the gaps. Obviously, at this point, staffing is our major focus. And typically, at this time of year, we're in the last stages of hiring, of filling our positions and ensuring that we have the appropriate staff and enough staff and highly qualified teachers and support staff where it is needed. That's always a critical need. This year, obviously, with running these two programs at the same time, it's going to be an even more critical need, especially since we, we can't anticipate how the pandemic might affect staff attendance and absenteeism. So staffing is our major focus right now. Basically, we are heading to redevelop and redo the entire teacher staffing plan for the entire district. Work that is normally done over a three or four-month period in the winter or in the spring is taking place over the next. So right now, we are working intensively with the principals, with the Office of Instruction, to make sure that we have the staff in place for both programs. We are going to need to reassign probably, I'm estimating about a quarter of our teachers to the Remote Academy in order to sufficiently staff that. We still have a lot of details to work out, especially at the secondary level. Elementary's a little more straightforward. At the secondary level, it is gonna, we are going to have some challenges because there are so many singleton classes, there are so many elective offerings, especially at the high school. And, you know, we're going to do our best to be able to provide as comprehensive a program as we can and also still maintain the program in the hybrid model. So that will be challenging because we're doing this with the same amount of staff as we had. Working along with that, we are working very closely with our teachers' union, as well as the other support staff unions, on, you know, looking at contractual implications of all these changes in the way we're delivering our program, and looking at different structures to the workday, different structures to work hours, some of the assignments that are given in the contract throughout the day and how that's going to look different depending on where the person is placed. So that's kind of a parallel conversation that we're having as we're developing this plan for staffing. We are, again, as I said, a critical focus of, of human resources at this time of year is ensuring that we have adequate personnel. And this year, as I said before, it's even more critical. So we are making sure we're going to have extra district substitutes available so that subs can be assigned to buildings, so that there's some flexibility in staffing there. In the hybrid model, we are going to, we're gonna, at the elementary buildings, who have smaller staffs to begin with, we are going to build in some extra teacher staffing for them, so that they have people who can come in and deliver AIS services to make sure for those two days that the kids are in attendance, who can go in and spell a classroom teacher, a second-grade teacher, for 45 minutes or an hour, so that he or she can make contact with the half of her students who are sitting at home that day. Because at any given time, on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, half of our students are going to be at home. In the meantime, our teachers will have half the students in front of them and will have a full day with them. So we've got to figure out ways that we can serve as both of those groups of students in the hybrid model to a high level. So we're working on the unions with that, with contractual concessions and agreements and so forth. Nirlan talked about our daily health checks for students. We are also required to have daily health checks, self-checks for staff as well. And we are using the Frontline system that she spoke about. Frontline is one of our trusted vendors in the district. We use them for a variety of functions, including in HR. They handle all of our application, online application and hiring processes. So we're very comfortable in contracting with them for this additional health service. So every day, every staff member will need to complete, go online. So every day, every staff member will need to complete, go online, either through their handheld device or at home on a computer, et cetera, to take this self-quiz about COVID symptoms or whether they've tested positive for COVID, and that will generate a report that will immediately go to Human Resources where we will, we will get a list every day of anyone who's checked yes to any of those symptoms and if they have a combination of symptoms as well. So we'll be able to tell very quickly. We're also putting in new protocols and processes in place within the buildings for our staff to call in sick, and all of our staff are going to get training on their first day of work in how to do that and what the expectations are for that. Our 12-month staff actually have already been doing that since they've been back since around the Fourth of July, only it's been on paper. Now it's going to be electronically, and we're going to be asking anyone who checks yes for a fever or yes for any of those other symptoms needs to call in sick, okay? And they're going to need to, they're also going to be advised to check in with their physician that day as well, and they need to continue to monitor their symptoms before they're going to be able to come back to work. So needless to say, that's going to generate probably an increase in absences, which is why we've got to be very vigilant about how we staff the hybrid program especially, but also the having subs available when we can. And it's going to be tough because the sub situation actually is worse this year than it's been in the last several years, understandably because of all that's going on. That was one of the reasons why we asked you tonight to approve an increase in the sub daily rates, and I appreciate the fact that you did that. And then the last piece of it, which is of course related to the health checks, is as we're doing with our students, we have to look out for the health and wellbeing of our staff as well and our employee groups, and working, HR is working with them. We've already had dozens of inquiries between Kristin and myself for people who have their own health conditions that may put them on a higher risk for COVID-19, or if they get COVID-19 for worsened symptoms or effects, or they might be taking care of a family member who's in that situation, or they might have some other underlying condition that would make COVID exposure more dangerous for them. So we're working with them within the confines of the state emergency law, the governor's orders, the federal emergency law, FMLA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, all of these come into play, and we have different flow charts and different conversations that we have to have with them depending on their situation to determine, A, can they be at work? B, if they're not at work, are they going to go out on a leave? Or C, are they a candidate for telework where they can work from home and still be working but not be exposed to other people? So there's a lot of complex decision-making that goes along with that, where we want, but we do, of course, want to ensure that our staff are healthy, that they are, that folks are not put at risk, and that they're not putting colleagues or students at risk as well. So those four areas are really the main emphasis right now in Human Resources, along with filling all of our usual openings and new teacher orientation next week and all those things, all those good things for the start of the school year. Any questions or things I can clarify? Great, thanks.
I know time is essential, but I'd like to also put a plug for community programs. I know folks are not thinking about those things, but they will pop up in terms of cup care, whether we are still providing care. The answer is yes. We thought that once reconfiguration was done, we had everything buttoned up, and then COVID happened, and we had to kind of like redo our financial structures, all of that stuff. So yes, cup care will be in operation the day that school opened. UPK will also be in operation following the hybrid model that the district has put, set forth, and if you recall, we have added an additional site, which is through the town of Henleyetta, so they will be following all of the procedures and processes that we have in place. The good news is that adult literacy will also happen as well, just like when COVID happened in March, we had to quickly go online. New York State has a curriculum that they wanted us to follow, and that's the curriculum that we've been following for adult literacy, but UPK is going to be the same thing. So if you're hearing these things, more information will come out, but just know that these programs are still in existence and they are alive and well.
Will Healing Connection still be allowed to come on?
Absolutely. Healing Connection, and we're also, we looked into the possibility because we are concerned about that for staff, you know, instead of staff mental wellness, so we started asking them more questions in terms of do they support adult as well. We know that the staff has EAP, access to EAP, but we also want to make sure that it's expanded a little bit, and so, yes, they say they can provide some support for that. So yeah, we'll have them.
A question about UPK, you said they're doing the hybrid model as well. Are they being provided with resources to connect online at home, or do they have to provide that themselves?
Well, we're still looking into that right now. Those are things that we're working on with the teachers. At Good Shepherd, some of the teachers are from here, all right? And if you recall, we also implemented a foundations program at all of the sites, so that's one of the programs that we will continue. Part of UPK, in addition to the academic, it's a lot of play as well, and so some of the videos that teachers have done in March all the way through June, we will continue to do some of those things for those play things or play activities at home, but in terms of the academic, it will still be focused on our foundations, the math skills, some of the world stuff that they want us to do, so, yeah.
I have a question. As we're sitting here, all of a sudden it just popped in my head, what about BOSIs that runs from us in the Webster Learning? They're still going to be over there on their own schedule, or?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to speak to it in general terms, and then Andy, I don't know if you want to pop in, but I know that a lot of those programs have tried to align their schedules to component districts. So I expect that several of the BOSIs programs are going to be on a hybrid model as well to try to align with the districts that they serve. But regardless of whatever their schedule looks like, it wouldn't interfere with our operation at all because there really isn't any crossover.
Yeah, we actually did a building tour with them last week, and we're, I'll group, were putting the same markings on their side as we have, and like Bo said, they'll be hybrid a lot of their programs as well. So Mike Sweeney and their site principal work closely together to make sure that there's no impact on each other, but they're doing a lot of similar things that we are.
I assume so, but it just kind of popped in my head. Thank you.
Okay, I know that that was a lot to digest. It's, you know, we've, we've been trying to keep you up to speed, but things have been happening really quickly, and in the summer, we don't meet as often, so we wanted to take the time to kind of walk you through all these different components and give you the opportunity to comment and question and push and pull on some things a little bit. It is going to be, like I said, I can't say enough about how hard folks are working, and I think, you know, this is going to be, it's going to be a unique situation, and I told the administrators today, you know, I know that the last six months has been incredibly difficult and folks are working really hard. I think we all have to prepare ourselves mentally that, you know, this is going to be the most difficult task that we've ever encountered as education professionals. This fault is really making all these, these models work, but I do feel like we're up to it here. And as Deana said, you know, if there's a silver lining in this situation, it's that, you know, I think there are some real opportunities to address some issues, issues around equity, issues around how we engage kids in learning, and how we connect them to the world in a meaningful way, because quite honestly, in education, our systems oftentimes lag behind the world around us for a lot of different reasons, and even though, you know, we graduated 94% of our kids this year, we're still losing 6%, which is too high. And so the models that we put in place, they don't work for all kids, and so I do think, to Deana's point, that this gives us an opportunity to really look at the, how we support kids, how we support families, the services that we provide on a daily basis, and to do better and to be better. And so as difficult as it's going to be, there are some opportunities within this crisis to come out better than we were. So we'll, we'll close that portion with that, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more conversation in the days to come.
Do you want to just continue with your superintendent's report?
Yeah, we submitted two written reports for your review and consideration, the Teacher Center Annual Report and the Collegial Coaching Report. Are there any questions on those two reports? Okay, I have, I have nothing new to report under oral information. Like I said, our, almost our sole focus is really centered on making sure that we can reopen safely in September.
Can you just talk a little bit about the upcoming parent sessions and how it looks like?
Yep. So we have our first two sessions tomorrow night. Our first session at 6 o'clock is for employees of the district, and the second is for parents. So they're, they are hour-long sessions. We will give a general overview. Because time is limited, they'll be shorter than they were tonight. We also did a thought exchange in anticipation of these forums, because for those of you who have participated in the exchanges, especially when we've used them to sort of frame a forum conversation, it helps to focus, it helps to focus our reports and updates on what people are most interested in, but it also keeps the conversation moving as well and helps to get feedback from people who may not be able to participate in the conversation itself. So we'll give brief reports and updates. We'll address the top 10 thoughts, top 10 rated thoughts that came out in the exchange specifically, and then we'll have an ample portion of time where people can participate in a live chat, so they would write in questions which will be communicated to us. We'll be in this room, it will be livestreamed. We will have someone here signing, we'll have an interpreter here to make sure that it's accessible to folks who need it in that respect. And like I said, we plan to answer those questions as people write them in. We'll be in this room, we'll be physically distanced, and each session will be, will be livestreamed.
Having been through some similar-ish sessions at my day job, I know there's a fair to decent chance that you won't get to everybody's questions in the allotted time. Is there a plan to follow up with a written, email communication, broadcast communication to kind of get to the unanswered questions, if there are any?
Yeah, well, tomorrow night will be a little bit easier because we can say, we're going to be here tomorrow afternoon, and we'll be taking questions again and then again on Friday, but in the event that we don't get to questions that people are asking, they can always submit through the website, and I have a number of people reaching out to me directly right now. And we do a fairly good job of getting back to people in a timely manner. Every once in a while, you get a question that requires some research and that takes us a little bit longer, or every once in a while, you know, you might get one that was intended for me and sent to the box and it, you know, didn't get to me, and they'll say, hey, I emailed you like three or four days ago, why haven't you emailed me back? So every once in a while, one slips through, but usually in one way, shape, or form, we're able to follow up with the person. So we do have mechanisms in place where we can, we can get back to people if they aren't able to have their question answered during, during a session.
Will we, as the board, be, we'll, we'll have the information to sit in on those sessions, both the staff and the parent sessions?
Yeah, they were, I believe the, we included the link in the last key news, so folks can, can log in, and we'll make sure, James, to your point, yeah, that we communicate that to the people that participate, yeah, the process that we're recommending for people that don't get their questions answered, how we can follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Or how, yeah, how they can get the question to us and then we'll follow up.
That's it? All right.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Brings us to new business. First item is our board workshops, our planning, and the draft is there of some topics for the coming year. You can see there's some, oh, there's one open spot, but hopefully you've taken a look at these, these are okay, but along the lines, if you think there is some other workshop that we need to have, I see Nikki's hand already, so.
Well, I was thinking, since we can't get into the schools this year, is there a way that we can have, whether it's a, because that's an extra person in the building, but a video or pictures of how classrooms are set up and, you know, feedback from staff of how it's going and from principals and everyone, just so we can, you know, kind of get a feel of how everything's going and actually see a classroom.
Can I think about the best way to accommodate that for you guys and then report back next meeting?
Yeah, that's perfect, thank you.
All right. Again, if you have some thought, it doesn't have to be tonight, but there's, you know, something comes up, I don't care if it's four months from now, and you decide we really, you'd really like a workshop, just let us know and we'll see what we can do to accommodate that and make it happen, because that's what it's about, getting information so that we can do what we do.
I just, I just looked at Pat. I know that there was some presentation at the MCSBA Labor Relations Committee in last year that, that you leaned over to me and you're like, oh, that would be a great workshop session, I just, I'm racking my brain for what it was. I'll look back in my notes, maybe we'll think of it, yeah.
Yeah, just let us know. All right. The second item was the draft staff appreciation letter there, hopefully everybody had a look at it. I thought it was, you know, okay, and if there's anything we missed, now's the time because it's going to go out. Okay, great. I would like to just remind folks that Karen will be sending out the agenda-setting document. It's an opportunity if you want to join in on an agenda-setting process. It would be key to make sure that it's filled out so that, because we've been doing them via Zoom, I'm not sure, or Google Meet, excuse me, I had a Zoom meeting this afternoon, but you know what I mean.
Zoom.
Thank you, I like that.
Boom.
So that if we continue doing those for a little while yet, then we wouldn't be missing getting you the link if you wanted to participate in it. We usually do them 7:00 AM.
Bright and early.
Bright and early, which I've been up for a while, so it works for me, but if, make sure when Karen sends it out, if you want to join in, that would be great. The other thing that from a follow-up from a previous meeting was folks were going to look at their schedules to see who wanted to be the sports booster liaison. If people still haven't had that opportunity, I'm just reminding folks to think about it, we still have time to get that. Their meetings are going to be really different this year anyway, so it's not as critical as it normally would be, but you know, we can make it work. All right. And I just made a note that Monroe County School Board Association sent out an email about their fall law conference, and it's going to be in-person, so if you're interested, don't forget to let Karen know about that. Yes?
What about NISBA doing everything virtual this year?
Karen and I have been back and forth. They haven't posted yet the type of sessions that they're going to have, so we're kind of, kind of waiting to see so we could figure out how folks, you know, if they wanted to sign up virtually, then the cost will be, you know, reduced to do that. So I would say we keep an eye on that, and Karen?
It's supposed to open up on one day. I am on vacation next week, but I did contact them and they said that we still have until September something, and I told her, I explained that we were concerned that even with Google or Zoom that the sessions would sell out or get overpowered, and she, they seemed to seem a little concerned, so. But they were finalizing eight more sessions and then getting ready to post everything. So it should be, I would assume this week, so you'll have a chance to look at it before it goes live on Monday.
So with Karen being on vacation, gives us the week to see if it comes. So with Karen being on vacation, gives us the week to see if it comes live, the information, and then we can email her so she can get us registered. I'm going to be registered, um, for the business meeting portion. So, but that's not a non-fee event, so I can't imagine how they're going to do that.
I'm not planning on attending any sessions virtually, but I did agree to present during a virtual session, which I've never done before, so we'll see how that goes.
You'll do great.
We'll see. But yeah, sure, we'll try it.
All right, so keep a lookout for the NISBA conference. Think about whether or not you want to attend virtually. If you don't want to, that's fine. It's a different, different year. All right, um, recap. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, one more thing. Um, for those who have not given me your food selection, I need for our retreat, for retreat, I need that before the end of day Friday because I have to call them so that it's ready when I get back. I need to do this in time.
All right, bring your own.
Just automatically it will give you the, uh, egg and olive sandwich.
There you go.
All right, my eyes are fuzzy, so I'm not able to read it. Okay. So we have an amendment to the calendar. So classes will begin on September 8th so that the teachers and staff have a little bit more time to prepare. The transfers of funds into the 2020 reserves, retention of funds and final tax, tax computations were all approved. So I can't read what I have here. My writing is really bad. The kickoff will happen, won't happen in person this year. We have a welcome back video that will be in its place. Diane will represent the board. And there will be no in-person liaison visits this year. There's another thing. I can't read my writing up here, so I'm probably going to, oh. The board retreat is on August 25th at 6:00 PM. The following board meeting will be on September 8th at 7:00 PM. So back to normal time starting in September. And I was going to mention your lunch. I have it actually written down. That I can read. I wrote that big. And then the last thing, um, coming out in the near future, we will put out what we're going to look for, looking for a new board member. That will come out in the near future.
All right.
And a reminder to stay and sign the tax warrant.
Stay. All right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn our meeting. James, Nikki, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you everyone for a great meeting. Thank you to all of you for the hard work that you're doing and share that down the ranks. We appreciate it.
My computer says 8:32.